You know, workshop to order. Uh, this is council budget workshop number one, Tuesday, May seventh. Starting at seven o'clock, we always start our meetings with not arranged, our workshops is not arranged. I'm guessing there's not any non-arranged. Here that wants to say anything, Tim or Marie? And online, I don't think I see anybody other than us dial in, right?
Nope.
Nope, just us. So we aren't recording this? Okay. Then, uh, we'll let the record reflect no non-arranged participation to start the meeting. And we'll, uh. Turn this over to Justin to, uh, take us through some of the packet and get us started on this.
Sure. Um, so. I, I hopefully everybody's had a chance to, to take a look through it. And I think I'd like to start by saying, I think the upcoming fiscal year looks worse on paper than I would expect it to be.
Okay.
Um. We're, we're looking good, uh, for projected, uh, for this year. Um. Right now, the amended budget has us at, um, fifty-seven to, uh, expenditure over revenue. Um, but the projected budget is showing about two hundred thousand to the good. Um. We had, um, about eighty-six thousand in the current fiscal year. Uh, more in interest and, um, investment gain than we anticipated. Um, twenty-four thousand more than in property tax revenue than we anticipated. And so far, uh, ninety thousand more in local community stabilization than we anticipated. Um. In the, in the upcoming fiscal year and the future projected fiscal year, um. We're keeping local community stabilization relatively flatter or low. Um, but. The last five years or so, um, we, we've gotten our second May payment, which has been a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand. Um, but we don't include that in the budget, even though at this point, there's no reason to think that we, we wouldn't get it. Um, the reason we don't is because it's still not guaranteed. Um. I've provided a list of projects and, and things that we accomplished or started in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Should I ask questions or can we go?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, just out of the reality, under first, uh, revenue expenditures, can you explain, um. You have twenty-four thousand dollars more property tax revenue, just because that feels like something that we were able to anticipate, but. Can you explain why there's that?
Yeah, so, 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 so I mean, there, there's always going to be some fluctuation between, you know, properties being constructed, properties being improved. And then also, um. Yeah, and then also, um. Uh, if there's like, um, late payments. Then, then, then the late fee gets applied and, and that, that we, we don't necessarily budget for.
Yeah.
And I'll pose the first question for, not to be necessarily be answered tonight, but. If we have revenue over expense. I think it should go directly into the fire station. One. Just throw that out there. I know that's not a final number and you won't know till.
Mm-hmm.
Till I seventeenth or whatever it is when the final things are said or whatever, but. So if it's tracking, if it was tracking towards that amount.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's essentially. Or do you want to look at it twenty percent or?
Mm-hmm.
Or sixteen percent or some, some, it's a chunk of what we have to figure out how to pay for, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And, and so. We, 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 we absolutely can. Um, I, I'm hesitant. I'm hesitant to, to keep throwing our. Uh, revenue over expense at the fire station, just based on the budget for next fiscal year and the following. Um, because I mean, that, 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 that is our cushion, um. And of, of the. General fund balance that is shown in, in the budget. We, um, a million of that is already, is already committed towards the fire station, so, you know, it mop off a million from. From that final number.
But you just got to tell me there's another potentially a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand.
Potentially.
That isn't even tracked here.
Correct.
If we didn't allocate, if we didn't, let's say. Do that, where the fire station, how to just go into the general, uh, correct?
It would.
So. Okay.
Um. The, 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 the other part of that too is. A portion of, of what we're looking at for the fire station is that, um. Uh, contingency amount. Between. Our city contingency and CM contingency. And. For all of that, I think I'd, I'd rather house that. Or keep that in general fund. Without necessarily committing it. Um.
Well, just because we committed doesn't mean we can't uncommit it.
Correct.
But, but I know we've got a million or a million two, I don't know what number we're using these days. We gotta figure that out, we haven't figured it out yet, so. I'm just saying, we take a, a huge chunk out of that decision. With no sweat on anybody's back. That's not what sh- sure we are projecting.
Yeah, and then, then I think what Sean was referencing is the, there's a million two that's unaccounted for in the potential cost.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a gap, no, I'm, I'm with you there, Marie. You've done a nice job of increasing that with some interest and. Yeah.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Um. So I, uh, you know, a list of, of projects started or completed in, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, in the recommended twenty-four, twenty-five budget, um, listed out some of the, some of the things that we, we talked about through our, our goal-setting sessions. Um, and. Kind of jump, jumping ahead a little bit into kind of how we're, we're looking to meet those. Um, I have budgeted for a wage study, um, like, like we talked about. Um. I have included. Dollars in the budget to go towards hiring a, uh, finance director in training. Um, effective July first. And then working with Marie through the year, um, anticipation of Marie's retirement.
So how much did I include for that?
Uh, I think the difference is. A hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, just between, um, wages and benefits. So that. That, that, that does not include Jenna. So I think it's like two hundred and twenty. Um, for the, for, for the promotion of Jenna into clerk and, and deputy treasurer. So between, so, so it, it's all accounted for in the treasure department.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which is.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the, the hundred up to two sixty-three.
Yeah, so it's, uh, Department two, two, five, three, pages twelve and thirteen of the packet. Um, so. In ne- in recommended budget twenty-four, twenty-five, that two hundred and sixty-three thousand includes Marie, finance director and treasure, and training and. Uh, deputy, uh, clerk and de- deputy treasurer. Um. The.
So if you could get a breakdown of that, I'd like to know what's breakdowns.
Okay. Um, and then. Each of their, um, benefits are accounted for, you know, health and dental insurance and, you know, dental lines in, in that department.
When we do a wage study, does that include benefits that we have or don't have? Is that part of the wage study?
It can be. Um. And I, I mean, if, if that's one thing that, that we want to look at or have.
I don't know, I don't know to, to be comparable, what's the whole package, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I, if I remember the last time we did it, we did look at that, that's part of the big picture. I think they're not all good, get that out for us.
Well, that's obviously. It's part of it, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, and yeah, you're right. I mean, at least this time around, pretty much everybody's on the same. Retirement plan.
Okay.
Which is whole.
All right, thank you.
Um, included a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for rehabilitation of eighty-fifty Main Street. Into, um, public, public restrooms and or, um. Lease, you know, um. Or, or private lease or some combination thereof. And that, that would be, you know, ideally that would be, um, architectural design, engineering and construction. Um. We're, we're keeping all of our existing public garden initiatives, um, we have thirty-five thousand. In, uh, the tree department. Which, um, were, uh, we increased the budget last year for that. Yeah, yeah.
Don't run down the railroad tracks, I haven't seen that since I've been ten years old. No. Anyway, sorry.
You were saying just.
So, um, I, 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 I'm keeping the, the, the tree department high, uh, to continue our, 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 uh, tree trimming program. And then, um. The rental inspection ordinance is, is baked into, uh, the playing department. Um. In just the year twenty-four, twenty-five, I also have two hundred thousand, uh, included for contribution towards the Dexter Chelsea Trail Connector. Um, which last I heard, uh, constructions anticipated to start spring, early summer of twenty twenty-five. Uh, so next year. Um. Um, some contracted improvements here at thirty-five, fifteen, um, we need to replace, uh, two furnaces and two AC units. And that's baked into, um. Uh, two, six, five, uh, Department two, six, five buildings and grounds. Um.
How many classes are there?
Seven.
And I would assume the two that we're talking about being. In this unit and that unit is supposed to over there.
I, I, I think both of them are on the, the office side.
And what, how many AC units are?
Uh, so I think there's four or five, um, AC condenser units and then we have, um. Two, two split unit. One there, one there. Um. And then I've budgeted, um, for a sig- and another significant increase in, in, uh, the AFD costs. Um, last I, I checked, we're, we're looking good on the percentage of runs, but it only takes one month for that, uh, to flip. Unfortunately. Um, this year twenty-four, twenty, or twenty-five, twenty-six, I included two hundred and fifty thousand for the Mill Creek Park Playground Project. Um. In both, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, um, I've included dollar, or continue to include dollars. Um, as OPEB contribution, um, but those can also, that, those dollars can also go towards, um, employee buyout. As, as, as we discussed, we're, um, working through that policy. Um, and then, uh, another big increase for, for DAFD. Um. I provided, uh, the last few years of, um, actual contributions towards general fund balance, uh, middle page three. And then, um, went into, into detail on, on each, each of the departments and, and what changed. Um. Anybody have anything? In particular that you wanna, you wanna talk about?
I understand that why I, uh, we did, we got the village rollback numbers, the other numbers, and we do have a rollback this year, it's minor. But it wasn't that.
Okay.
Maximum slavery.
Thank you.
It's really fifteen thousand dollars for that lighting over the bridge. What?
That, 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 that was one, one verbal estimate that we got.
What exactly has to go in?
I can talk about that, I, I, I actually did, I think there's a report from that, um, I'll be like, Richard, a lot of it is, it's the labor, because they're gonna have to. So the proposal that I got is that they would cap it to one of the white holes right near the bridge. And a lot of the cost from feeding, uh, feeding, they get the lights and get like, kind of the conduit all, uh. And I don't remember it, it's really not the materials, it's, it's, it's really.
So this may be an absolutely ignorant question, but. Have we looked into the action of solar lighting under there?
So I did, and so a lot of the things I, some of the information I received from the, uh, the electrician I was talking to. With the solar apparatuses, a lot of times it's the cost, it's, it's not really the cost of electricity, um, but with a lot of the solar lighting. A lot of times to keep them cost-effective, the wedding, um, like the actual lights that they use are a lot more cheaply made. There you go, or then help fix with the cost of solar panels. Whereas the ones that are in the full diameter, see they're a little more heavier duty, just so they're being in the bridge, they're by a lot of moisture. Um, and so that's always a concern, is future maintenance, but, uh, would be one with, uh, solar, so I, I know parts of recognition, finisher, for instance. It's just, I, I think it just makes more sense to do it regardless.
I did want to make sure that there was comparison.
Yeah, and we do, and we, and I mean, so.
With the idea of solar, there's no way to look into like a front benefit for or anything like that. I know it's like not big, I know it's just something that came up at a recent meeting, I just wanted to sort of like, you know.
When, when would this happen?
So we, we, we have a budgeted for, for this upcoming fiscal year.
Is there any way we could tie it into some work with the party about?
It's, um.
Bad idea.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a bad idea, it's, it's not, I, I, I don't know that it would necessarily be. Beneficial, because I, I mean, this is a project that we can just bid out and manage ourselves. If, if we're for to ti- for try to run it through the project, then we're paying. You know, the construction manager fee and.
That's true.
You could go to back the harbor, get some double sided chains and.
I mean.
Tim, did we? I thought we had some outlets that weren't working on the bridge with the, the garland lights, you know anything about that?
Talk about.
Sorry to get way off base, but if you're gonna have somebody there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was like, you know, just put some fairy lights over there or just be down there.
Stand with flash. No, I, I don't have a problem, I mean, we have power on the bridge, Dan's right, and we have power on both sides of the bridge, I think, you know, uh, and, and maybe. Enough, I mean, so it's, it's, it's pick your spot or, I don't care, connect and loop it, whatever, but.
You're right, that's, right?
I mean, just coming down and over or, or down and over and over, however, you know. It's gonna, there's gonna be a pipe that's been, uh, wearing.
And I guess some of the.
Standless steel or whatever we're gonna do.
Some, I only brought this up some, somewhat because fifty thousand dollars is a lot, I know we were looking at it was gonna be a lot more than we thought. But also, this seems like something, if there is that power, we could solve this sooner rather than later, I mean, every day. So, I mean, I, I, no question. Um, and especially. As the water level rises and falls, like, whether it's wet or there is especially a problem, I mean, yeah, you. So if we could do a quick fix. And see how long that will. Work. Whatever.
Well, I think what you're saying is nobody's objecting to the projects, they just started figuring out how to get it done, that's what I'm saying, right?
Well, yeah, ultimately, then also, we could achieve or.
Yeah, well, we want to do it so it lasts.
Yep.
So we're not going to ask the Congress.
Well, there's power in there, then, somebody should look into it, John, to me.
I don't know if there's enough power there, but there's. Yeah, and, 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 and I think, you know, um, I, I think it was, it was Hop that came down and, and looked at it, but. The, the, the goal is to tap into something.
Okay.
I didn't. There, that, you know, you, whether, whether it's a box.
Right near the street light.
Yeah, exactly.
And I, I, it's, uh, it's, as the street lamps would come on, it would pop up the lights through, so everything would go at the same time. GT and, uh, real professional.
Good.
For most of the streets, that's where you get it. It's been. It's a little power. Then you gotta, it's going into the environment, that's gonna be. Moistures, you know, well, there's a moisture system.
Um, the, the, the other thing, uh, that I, I didn't mention, um, is that, uh, I've included in the budget to go up to a six DPW.
Six DPW?
I'm sorry, I can ask one last question about.
No, keep asking.
I'm sorry.
Keep asking questions.
I'm just, the, uh, the moisture resistant thing, I, I get that, so we're looking at pretty much like, I would assume on the size of.
Up, 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 up in, like, uh, under, like underneath, uh, the, the bridge.
What if we just did like a. Um, one end or the other or both. Something that shines into it, so it's not getting so much moisture.
If, you know, what I'm saying is that it's not necessarily because it's underneath the bridge, you're next to a.
Right.
A rapids, that's goal, so you're gonna have moisture there all the time.
Sure, but if we did it outside of it with more moisture resistant lights, would that have been through longevity or? I just, I, I'm sure you guys have thought all of this, I'm just.
This is. Be dealing with what I felt the license goes, deal with people, if you get a spot on, then I start getting people complaining.
Yeah, you want it downward, downward projecting.
Yeah.
All right, I'm done.
That's okay. But, um, I mean, the, 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 the heaviest hits, um. Are the, are the capital projects. And, um. The, the finance director in training. For, for next.
Um, with the, our, our B D here at the tops. Um, ClearGov software, is that, that fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, I know we've done all of this before, but can you, when you, I mean, is that gonna be an ongoing yearly cost effect?
Yes.
And that is the cost, is it fixed?
Uh, I, 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 I think, I think there's some inflationary increases, um, but. Yeah, it, it's, it's gonna be i- i- in, in or around fifteen thousand.
And you think that that has the worst investment?
Um.
Don't know yet.
So, we, we ran into a big problem with ClearGov. Didn't, well, you heard me talk about the credit accounts problem. So, the, or the credit accounts update, this was not ClearGov's. The delays in implementation were not ClearGov's fault. Per se. Um, it was a very difficult, there was, there were a lot of new parts. And the problem is that we still need to. Do some correction on the B S and A sides and make the two software talk to each other because. It's the numbering system, um, so ClearGov is now using all the numbers. That are correct, but we, we have some communication problems with the two software, because if we download from B S and A, it's gonna upload into ClearGov all the wrong numbers again. So it's like a two-part. Correction before we can finally get it all. Working together, so this year, though, I've already started, I did the D A budget in it. And I started like hand entering in. What you're looking at, so hopefully this will all work out well and we'll have. It doing at least sixty-five percent of what it's supposed to be doing. Okay. I mean, I'm most concerned with the budget and more concerned with that, because I know you guys are hopeful that would be. Uh, yeah, and, and it was not ClearGov's, it was just. If I had known now or then, what I knew now, I would have recommended waiting to implement ClearGov until we got the B S and A problem all worked out. But I didn't know it was going to be this.
Yeah, where, whereas, um. Which I, I think has had its own. Problems. But, um. Uh, you know, for example, I, I, in, in developing, um, the budgets for, for this year. I, I basically downloaded a spreadsheet off of B S and A and uploaded it into Google Sheets. Um, that. Myself, Marie and Josh were able to, to share and look at. Um, to play around with, rather than playing around in, in ClearGov. So. It, it's, it's, it's gonna take some getting used to, um. And, you know, incorporating it into the process, um, but like Marie said, I think we're, we're still hopeful that it will. Do what, what, what it was promised to do.
It's gonna be a little bit of a lingering question, but. I have, I'll be honest with you, I guess I have not had a time to deal with the B S and A side of it, because it's, once again, it's a whole lot of things you gotta jump through. Um, but once we have either, you know, once we have more people wearing my hats. Then I'll be able to really zero in on that, but just right now, we'll go wise.
Hmm.
Not something you anticipate, having worked out to the best of it. The ability of the systems and yourself before you, yes, depart. I just would hate, I would hate for you have to like be this far into it, well, I hate, I, I think it would be. Not in anyone's best interest for that to not be resolved.
Yeah, no, no, it can be resolved. As long as I'm not already ready to react.
Right. All right, can I ask one last question and then, and then I'll shut up for a while? Um, again, it's not a big ticket item, but. Have we thought at all about? The ice rink? Whether or not it's worth it, it seems less and less like it's worth it and more and more like it's just a headache for the APW.
So, uh, we've, we've batted around the, the concept of going to, um, bow ice.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it's, it's an investment.
Yeah.
I, I think, um, just, you know, go, going online and searching prices, you know. You, 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 you buy them basically by, by the square tile, um, and I think it was something like sixty thousand dollars for. The size of ice rink that we have.
Would that be a one-time cost? And then maintenance costs after that, or?
So it, it would probably be, be a, a large upfront cost and then you'd have to replace them as they fail or, um, chipped or.
Do we know any communities that use that?
I, I don't offhand.
Does any, and.
Be interested to know how well they hold up and what, what we're looking at.
It, 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 it does burn the blades.
Well, if it's just for. It's not like it's for competitive or like.
No, no, what I'm just saying is, like, you might have your half kids, they probably would be.
But, but we also don't, don't want Marie skating on it, because we don't want her chip it, chipping the, the expensive tiles.
I'm just wondering if there might be a better use of that line item. Like, if we could come up with something else to use it for in the winter, because it just seems like that's. So unpredictable, and if this is not a good solution. Like, why, why are we spending money on something that's not being used and it's just an eyesore frankly?
Yeah, I, I mean.
No, no, no fault.
What do we spend on that, Adrian?
It's thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have thirty-five hundred budgeted.
But I mean, if we could put thirty-five hundred into that five thousand dollars for Luminary Easter Extravaganza, new event, like maybe two new events?
Be, be careful with that, or not, that'd be something.
The what?
Those are bad, yes, yes, yes.
Like, hey, that's true. No, I get it.
Pretty cool when it works.
Just.
Or sat over at Aubrey's and ate dinner and watched the kids over there, his parents, but.
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem is, yeah, it was only open, I think, for, for a week or two this year.
It's just winters, I mean, I don't think.
Well, and, and, you know, flip, flip side, you know, it's a benefit to, to, to the roads fund when, when it doesn't work, because. A lot, lot, less, uh, less snow plowing and winter maintenance, but.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of a crapshoot.
Wonder what the community thinks.
I was wondering that too, there was a way to sort of sauce that out, but. I hate to say the word, sir, right?
So let me ask a question. Uh. Focusing on slightly larger dollars than thirty-five hundred.
Yes.
If you don't, if you don't mind.
I'm done.
Um. Have we thought about asking the county to help pay for the sheriff cost?
Like, like, I, I like a- a- asking, asking the, the, the.
The board of commissioner.
Board of commissioner or somebody or you know, like just making a pitch to. Say, hey, you know, we're planning to invest. I don't even know what the numbers anymore because I don't trust anything that comes out of anybody's mouth related to cost. Let's say it's five hundred thousand dollars. And we're you know, we're upgrading their their space from. I think X to Y. And to a spot that they like better because they'll get a park closer and all this other stuff. You know, is there any? I'm gonna have to write a letter. Hey, here's the investment we're making, you know, things have gone up since we originally, is there any way the county could chip in?
I I I I think it would definitely be be worth it to to make that ask. I maybe maybe we can do a council resolution. To 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 make that formal ask. Of the K K County Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, I guess. I was trying not to put him on the spot. Well, you know, I'm not trying to make it a public, like we said, we asked for it, they said no. I was, you know, I was trying to think. Is there a way that, you know, cooperatively, you know, we're you know, we're we're pitching in a couple hundred thousand towards pathways and connectivity and. You know, we're investing in them sort of and they. I don't know, just.
So so I. Yeah, I I I I I had a had a very short conversation with uh with Keith. Um Flores Flores, uh K commander at the sheriff's office and asked him, hey, you know. You know, could the sheriff's office potentially make dollars available to to do this or to to help with this project? And the answer was no.
Can I add?
Please.
Um I remember a number of years ago when we were talking about this and we had a woman that was the sheriff, I think.
Uh she she was the sheriff's representative, I think it was Lisa Lisa.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, she was, she's a, she was a.
Lisa's. Didn't want much to do with it because they weren't gonna pay for anything. She she was upfront about that. It seems like something's changed because the new gentleman that we have. Has been participating and telling us what they needed, whether that's, I'm not saying it's wrong. But it's a whole different position than where it was with Lisa to where we are with um, I can't think of the gentleman's name.
Al.
Al, which is fine because we do, you know, we do need to know, but it just, it's a whole different um. It's different than it was a number of years ago to where we are, that I think is increasing stuff.
Well, and 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 the the question that I didn't have, and they actually have time to ask to Al, but I. I kind of wanted to ask was, you know, to, wh- what does providing space for the sheriff actually mean?
Exactly.
Like like if if we if we provided just a white box, we said, there there's your space. Like, I I mean, the 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 they're gonna bring in desks that are or chairs or, you know, what whatever office equipment they need to be able to function. But like, what what's the minimum that we could get away with providing? And still have them. You know, willing to occupy that space.
I just throw it out there.
No, I don't think it's a bad idea, but.
And and I if obviously council thinks of, you know, we need a resolution to do it, that's one way, but I. Seems to me like we probably, you know, could reach out to Jason. Right, and. I don't even know, have you have you interviewed, we should, we should show ourselves to the county.
So I I I I I I had a meeting with Jason. Um a cou- a couple of months ago, just to kind of talk through all the stuff that we have going on. And um you know, I I asked him, you know, what, you know, if there's if there any grant opportunities or, you know. Possible options for funding at the at the county level and he was like, eh, we're running into the same problems that you guys are.
Good.
So.
Okay, okay. Well, the the other side of that, and I'll say this, Joe would say it if he's here, but you know, if we could. We could reapproach the schools about how the cost share. For the third and a half option.
Yeah, I I mean, we're we're currently paying fifty percent. And they're getting in at least eight months out of the year.
Um on the goals and objectives worksheet. That's in the packet.
So uh just as as up, that 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 hasn't been updated since February, I I believe.
Okay, well, under. Under the. Tax rate competitiveness. Is the is the fifteen, that's the sum of the general plus the streets?
Correct.
And are we adding in the, are we adding in the?
The bond is not included.
Should it be?
Well, um. It really depends on what. Matters you want to use. Um and you can throw the bond in there and we're up against a community that doesn't have bonds.
I understand, I just was wondering what what the metrics are, okay, so it but that obviously doesn't include the bond, yeah, okay.
Or just like operating.
Yeah, understood. So state shared revenue, remind me again, we we have all of it or I think there's more coming? Uh no.
So so for for that, I would look at the projected. The the projected is is what we actually think.
Okay, so so we don't think that's gonna be too far beyond what we've gotten in the past.
Correct.
It might be a little over five hundred, like four ninety-five, five hundred, okay. The bigger the bigger opportunity for a bonus is in the local community stabilization.
Correct. I mean, you you can see um the activity in twenty-two, twenty-three. And that activity is similar going back to twenty-one, twenty-two and.
So the four eighty-one that you're looking at on the left side.
But that, you know, and then the reason, again, the reason we don't budget. For that amount is because it's not guaranteed. At any point, the state could say, hey, you're you're, we we don't have to give that to you, what's the wrap?
I know.
Well, maybe you guarantee that.
Yes, but that's a, that's a question we should ask somebody about though, because. It's not, it's not, it's not likely that the state, I mean. A witness has been very transparent about. Most things. I would say, if not all. I'd be surprised if she would. Pull the rug out on something like that that affects so many communities without a prior announcement or some foreshadowing or whatever.
So I have asked the question in multiple kinds of various people. And always just then go, well, I just go, you just no guarantee in the legislation.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Well, Whitmore doesn't have the finals, anyway, she's seven of joy.
But it's but it's if whatever happens falls under her, you know, she's gonna wanna control the message, I'm sure.
Yeah, and and not every community gets this kind of. Um we're going to fall, but it 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 would be dependent on what your. Personal property taxes were back when they changed that law.
Right, in fourteen.
And we we had healthy personal property tax.
Right.
This, the year that we were in or last year, sorry, the twenty twenty-three year, that year was the first year that. We were getting no local revenue on the emergency management personal property. The E M P we call it. So I'm assuming or hoping that's gonna be similar to last year. It's based on use tax that the that the state class. Not sales tax, so. Last year was my bigger concern because that was the first year that it wasn't happening here. They said the formula was gonna change, so I hadn't seen.
Yeah, they didn't seem to actually change the formula.
So um. Jamie has talked about priority-based budgeting. Do we feel that we are addressing priorities that we've identified?
Why, I mean, well, I must be forgotten.
What would you say, what would you say we aren't, that that that's been talked about over the years? What would you say we aren't planning for? And I realize, I realize, you know, we we don't, it's not like we start over, right? We've we've been building a whole bunch of things. For a long time, succession plan has been talked about in prior years, it might be getting closer to some implementation, but those goals are carrying forward. They build on each other, right? So. I'm just asking, I've heard her talk about priority and the other question she asks is. You know, what's our discretionary? What what amount is discretionary? So and I know that that that's a matter of opinion, maybe.
Yeah, and 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 so when 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 we talk talk discretionary, I mean. The I I'd say that there that there's levels of of discretionary, so you know, there's there's the stuff that like I listed that. You know, I I would consider like the easy discretionary.
Right, these are easy choices, you know, I wanna do it or I don't, right?
Yeah, right. Well, once you start getting into personnel and.
Yep.
Benefits and like, you know, for example, we we could, we could take take a red line to every line that says training. Great training and education, we can take a big, big red pen to that. And that's, you know, four forty, four forty to forty-five thousand. But is that the, is that a message that we want to collectively send to staff? I would say that that that's.
That's one example, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's not.
No, no.
You know, as a community, it's all.
Yeah, but 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 I mean, and and I wasn't, I wasn't trying to imply that that like. That's what you're, that's what you're thinking, but I would say that that that's another level of of discretion. Um and then once we get into, you know. Um to to talking about like staff time and and things that we could choose to do or not do. Like we we as a as a community could choose not to do leaf collection or roadside brush chipping. Um.
Yeah, those are service related.
Those those are 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 service related, which which is which is another another step in.
Yep.
In the. Uh category of dis- of discretion, like we we like. Council has discretion over that, but that's a much harder choice.
So could I say that it would, that it's fair, it's fair then to suggest that the. The surplus that is fairly predictable each year. Is council's opportunity for discretionary spending?
I I I would say so.
I mean, if everything else has been conservatively planned, both from a revenue or we're under predicting. Right, you you we're hoping, but we I will, there's no legislation, as you would say, but we underpredict what we've historically observed. By little and 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 we we I'm not, I don't wanna say we've, we've fluffed the expenses, but we've. We've got them where we feel good about the numbers, reasonable numbers, right? So if there's a, if there's a balance at the end of all that, if you guys have done. As a team, your good job and we've not done anything crazy, which doesn't mean, I mean, there's some of that which.
Well, and 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 stuff like that.
That's a discretionary amount of money then, right?
Yeah.
And I think John, to go to your questions, if you kind of mind, we love it, um and we've talked about this before. That to me, as as you know, in my position, that goal setting is just so important. That's what council is telling staff, this is our vision and what we wanna do, and the staff comes back and says, okay, this is how we can do this.
Right.
With the money that we have.
Right, well, and when when we talk about the importance of succession planning, that doesn't come with a dollar. It comes with the, with the, do you understand why it's important to do that? Right? You know, and you know, it would, you know, it's been what, ten years since we did a wage study? You know, it's probably time to do one, right? Probably doesn't mean we're lowering salaries. I I mean, oh, you know, this this line item is less, well, all that, take advantage of that. You know, I mean, that's not how those things work, right? So those those are investments. Those are investments also. And I just, I I guess I'm, I'm trying to talk about big picture things because I'm not sure everybody is comfortable doing that. Okay, I mean, I I. Why is why is my thirty-five hundred dollar to fifteen thousand? I'm good, I'm good with it, I'm when I when I.
I mean, what's that stupid movie I watched one time, if you.
No, no, no.
If you watch the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves.
That's true, that's true, and I and I'm with that, I pick up everyone I walk by, okay? But but I I, what I'm getting at is, we we have. We have heard a couple of things that I know different council members are wrestling with. We've heard Reagan say, I'm only comfortable if your reserves go to X. Yeah, I don't even remember what the number is, I have to go back and listen to the tape, okay? And then then think about whether it makes sense to me, but we we have a a major. Project that we have to finance or fund. And we're a million or a million too short, again, I don't know what the number is. And and questions are being asked, okay, do we, do we bond for that? Well, interest rates are at all time high or all time high for a long, long time anyway, since I've been involved in this. Maybe it's not the best time to bond. So you know, my my theory is we should pay for cash. If we can, if we can put the cash aside and minimize the bond payment, because the bond payment's gonna be on the books for ten years or won't be any less than ten years. Um I'd like to get that, if we have to do a bond, which I anticipate we will likely do some amount, I'd like it for it to be as small amount as possible. Is what I'm thinking, so I'm just trying to be transparent with my, with my thoughts on those because. I know we put that in a different special project fund or gets moved out of here to there, but ultimately, it's these dollars that. That have to pay it back.
Yeah, and and um I I unfortunately, I I didn't look at at the changes that you made, Marie, but what what um where where were we, where were we sitting with the millage? Um towards the bond?
It's going to be slightly lower. Um. Just because the, you know, we've got the growth and the D E A is not catch. Or did not capture the bond. So I had it going from. I had it going down to one point six eighty-six five. And it was one point seven.
So it's the same number, I mean, it's basically the same number.
Um because the bond payment is going up, I think, I want to say thirty thousand, maybe forty thousand. Um you say, you think dollars and gross, you know, when you talk about um. Zero based budgeting. I know expert out of my understanding is you say you have this much money, you never really start from zero. And then you start building, you know, based on, so everything is on the table, like Justin said, you cut everything. We know from an operating perspective pretty well what is required. So really, everything left over is exactly what you're talking about, it's.
Well, that's why I'm, that's why I'm talking about that, started talking about that about, because I I think. I think it's there, I mean, I know what this says, what, three point four million or something at the bottom of one of these, there's.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't tried to tie that up to one of Marie's, it's been a while. Uh. So i- 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 is that a- 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 unassigned?
Yeah, 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 so that makes sense, that's three point four, right? Got a million in the other thing.
Plus plus two two hundred and twelve and.
And stabilization.
And super stabilization.
So. Our.
Right.
Committed fund balance, this is that one million thirty-two thousand, our unassigned fund balance right now is. Two point three million.
Yeah, and so so my 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 recommendation on putting the reserves, the surplus is to protect the two point three. Because otherwise, the question's gonna be be, how much of the of the two point three plus whatever we put in there can we take? And I'm. I don't know, I mean.
I I love having to help the contacts, I mean, the the bond rate, I just love that too, but I mean, there is a point where. You gotta look where you're not necessarily holding the taxpayer's money, putting it back in.
Well, right, and we've been saving for a reason, right?
And I know Justin's planning on using what, almost half a million of the capital the next two years?
I but I mean, that that that's assuming that. Uh the budget goes as budgeted.
Well, and I I I think we should look at selling the math properties. And getting that, I I don't care, I I don't wanna sell it at a huge loss, but I mean, even if we got what we sold it for. It would be better to have that cash today earned in five percent than. Than having it sit there unused and give somebody a chance to put some. Than having it sit there unused and give somebody a chance to put something there.
Well, yeah, and I, I mean, if, if, and assuming it's developable, then. Then there's. Property takes value to having somebody own it and developing.
I, I don't know the steps necessarily to doing that, but I, I think. I think that we owe it to our. I mean, we, we gotta get, we gotta get. The big project done and then move on from some of the things that we've done in the past. Over there.
That might have all of that.
Yeah.
Needs to get there. Put it on the ballot, get it over with.
Yeah, I mean, I think people would vote to sell it. Well, I don't, I mean, maybe not.
We'll find out.
Maybe not, that tells us, I mean, at least that tells us they don't want to.
Right.
Anyway, it's, it's a long term asset, is what it is.
Um. How, how, how soon do you want to move on? Selling it?
Well, I, I don't know, I, I, I personally think that is a separate thing. It's an asset, though, that we should forget, not forget we have. I think that's a separate thing from figuring out the, how to fill the gap in the. Fire station.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I've been talking about that forever, and you asked me the question, we should still. Last year, yesterday, tomorrow, now.
I know, I mean, I mean, to, to keep our practice on elections, we should probably do it in twenty-five, twenty-six. I don't want, I don't want to fill all those paintings in twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. You know? Somehow, need to have extra nine days.
Be interesting to see how much it's worth now.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, and I mean, it should be an easier property to develop than, for example, thirty, forty-five product. Um, I mean, one, one option could be just put it on the market and highest bidder. Goes and.
We can't, I mean, we put it on the market. Before we put it on the ballot.
I, 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 I wouldn't. Or, I, I.
The question is, are the residents going to say who's going to buy it, or is the residents going to be worried about what it's for sale for? I mean, I mean, when, when we, when we say we want to sell it, do we, do we have to have a dollar?
I, 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 I don't think that's required for, for the charter amendment.
I mean, you could say, you know, sell it for a amount. Not lower than X.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a good way.
Fair market value model of the next. I'm sure you have to get a fair amount of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's five, five hundred and thirty thousand or five fifty or something.
Yeah, come on, or.
Uh.
I just say that.
It's a version of, it's a version of our conversion.
Well, I see.
Right? I don't know what our zoning, what is it, is it that village credential, is it? Ah, is it, is it professional business?
It, it might be.
I think before, I mean, we would need to communicate that obviously the public would be, all the potential. Could be. Whether by right or. Otherwise.
Yeah.
Well, well.
He's running the tax strain, the power pole in the touch.
So, so how do we, how do we show? In here, where do we show the draw for reserves or the use of reserves?
Uh, page twenty.
Twenty, go to that.
Very bottom, um, you have. Uh, the estimated revenues, that's, uh, the appropriations and then the difference between. Revenue and appropriation.
Okay, this line here?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so we, we don't show it as a revenue item, we just show it as, as of coming off the fund balance.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so you, you have your beginning fund balance. And your beginning fund balance, plus or minus the. Net of revenues appropriations. Gives you your ending fund.
Yeah, okay. What year of the four twenty-five agreement are we on?
You have two years low, three years low.
Mm-hmm.
October and then well.
It's twelve years, right?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're coming up on it.
Right, and now. I'm going full.
What does that mean? So when, when, when we signed the four twenty-five agreement with Webster Township, this is on page twenty.
Yep.
It's on page twenty, right at the, above the bottom, under, under eight oh six.
Their contributions.
Under contributions, there's, it says four twenty-five, what's your four twenty-five agreement?
Okay.
And. When we signed that four twenty-five agreement with Webster Township. We were a village in nineteen ninety-seven. Okay, the agreement's fifty years, and what the agreement said is if. If any portion. Of. The land that was allowed to be brought in under the conditional transfer, the Webster's already agreed to let come in if property owner wants to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Think about Westridge.
Yep.
If any land comes in. And we become a city. We will pay to the township. The tax revenue that they would have otherwise earned. Off of that land for a period of twelve years.
Okay.
So the year in two thousand fourteen, when we became a city.
Mm-hmm.
For the fifth, two thousand fifteen, that's when we were.
So two thousand fifteen would have been the fright, because it was November, yeah, that makes sense.
Twenty twenty-five, so.
So twenty fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Drive twenty-six is probably last year. Twenty-seven, all right, whatever it is.
Well, I mean, yeah, I think, I think fifteen you start. Fifteen.
For twelve years, I think it's like for twelve years.
But these lines indicate how much we've been paying.
Correct, correct, and they've gone up, every time homes have been built, they've gone up, right? Back in, back in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, when there was, we were paying less because.
Right.
Paying the. Yeah, so, so there's thirty thousand. That's going to come back to the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
As, uh. I think there's going to be an expense that goes away. Unless another property comes in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that would be a better.
So twenty twenty-seven, we don't have to pay them.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, um, there's also currently.
Unless another property comes in.
If another property comes in.
Remember, remember, there's all those properties up along here on our drive, drives going towards, um.
Territorial?
Well, yeah, towards territorial, on the other side of the river, towards the church.
Yep.
There's a whole bunch of properties over there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's, um. There's additional land. I'd have to pull the agreement.
So what happens after twenty twenty-seven when the, if more houses going?
Well, Westridge is built out.
Mm-hmm.
Right, or if, if, assuming Westridge is built out, if a house is going after twenty twenty-seven, there's no more payments. To Webster. It's on, it's only on, it's only for the period of time. Within the agreement between nineteen ninety-seven and twenty forty-seven. Where one of those properties would come in while we're a city. So.
And it's essentially Dexter's, then.
Yeah, it's ours, I mean, yeah, there's nothing, it's not, the township can't take anything away.
So is it annexed then?
What?
The four twenty-five?
The remaining parcels that are not?
The whole thing.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's a conditional transfer then, so.
Okay.
So like the property on the other side of the, the river.
Right.
If those property owners. Between now and twenty forty-seven. Say, hey, we'd like to come into the city, Webster Township has already given up their right to object. And in exchange for giving up their right to object. We agreed to pay them. The equivalent one mil or whatever their general bill is.
Twenty-seven.
Well, well, for twelve years for every parcel.
Okay.
So if that, like, that, that corner, so like that corner house right on the corner across kitty corner from the, the party store.
Yeah.
If they came in, my understanding is, let's say they came in next year, twenty twenty-five. For twelve years, that parcel, Marie would have to calculate for that parcel. Whatever the taxes they pay, they're on their general fund, which only might be a mil.
Wow.
That's, that's the economic, remember, four twenty-five agreements are set up with an economic benefit.
Right.
The economic benefit to this, to the village. Or the city is the long-term potential to add property, the economic benefit to Webster that the trade-off is. They get, they get a benefit if we became a city, if we'd stayed a village, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be paying it, but. Call them for that.
They'd be collecting the taxes as well.
They'd be collecting, yeah. Right.
Yeah, they, they basically, because we became a city, their, their millage got cut off from our residents. But they, but they, for twelve years, they still wanted, they wanted to be paid back for.
But the other, the other protection that Webster Township gets out of a four twenty-five in this case. Is we can't. Jump. Because it's laid out along the borders, we couldn't go beyond it to bring property in, like the triangular piece that's way up.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's in or out of it, let's say that was out of it.
It's on.
Yeah, let's say it's out of it. We couldn't, we. Through twenty forty-seven, there's no way that that could ever come in. We'd have to have another agreement with Webster Township. So that protects them.
Okay.
Because we can't have, we can't have.
We can't just annex beyond their.
Right, right, now twenty forty-eight, all bets are off, everything starts over.
That's a lot more to the four twenty-five than I originally knew, thank you.
I, I'm happy to share that, or sometimes about that more, I mean, I, I haven't read it in some time, but every now and. Kingsley throws them.
Yeah.
Crazy question at me, and I. Have to look it up.
It's, it's, it's also not, not short either. That's not, not a short document.
Well, it's not, it's not a life-changing amount of money, but thirty thousand, thirty thousand every year, correct?
Thirty thousand, right.
Yeah, and, um, we, we also have, have butchers buyout. Uh, for the next two years. Um. At forty thousand a year, and then, and then that comes off.
Where is that?
Uh, that'll be in, uh. Under OPEB. But, um, what, what, what I'm showing, what I'm showing for OPEB is the same contribution.
Page you know.
Hey, I'm trying to find it.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's okay, uh. Thank you. Under insurance and bonds. Other post-employment, employment benefits. Um, so I, I took the recommended and projected budgets back up to. The twenty twenty-three activity and before. Um. And, uh. That forty thousand is, is. Baked into the, the eighty-eight thousand seven hundred.
Okay, so that's, that jump is, that's that question, okay? So why is it up seventy-five thousand then?
Uh. With the potential of other. Agreements and work at continued contribution towards. Towards, um. OPEB. From, from general fund.
So that eighty-eight seven is a portion of. Um. One of these tables?
No, no, so the, 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 the MERS table that, that's shown.
Or is that, is that MERS just defined benefit?
That's just defined benefit, okay, I guess I need to look at.
This one is just defined benefit then?
Right. I can, I can make that clarification on that table going forward.
So the hundred and eighteen above it is part of that then?
Correct.
And the, the rest of it would come out of the other funds?
Correct.
Okay, so that's this number right here, that's I got it.
Yep. And, and you can see the hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred matches the. Twenty-five, twenty-six number for next year, yep, yep, good. And. Um. The MERS. Report is constantly changing, they're, they're, are, are constantly fluctuating, um, but as of right now, they're showing that it should drop off around twenty thirteen. Per, per pretty, pretty significantly, our, our contribution towards, um, defined benefit. We shall see if that actually comes to fruition or not.
Did we do that five-year plan? When, wow, yeah, when, when can we see that?
So, 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 a- a- actually, we're, we're talking about that right before this meeting and, um. Uh, we should be able to share that tomorrow. And.
Okay, okay, good. I don't need to see it today.
I haven't, I haven't gotten that, uh.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You have more questions next time, I think I've asked enough for me.
Okay. Um. Just as, uh, kind of as, as a preview for the, for the next one, um, we're. Going into the transportation asset management plan, the, the roads plan for the next three years. The idea was that we would start drawing down some of the fund balance that we've built up. In the roads funds, for the sake of getting those dollars onto the roads. Um, and, uh. Based on, on the work that I've been doing in the roads budget, I think I've been. More su- more successful in, uh, drawing down fund balance than I had hoped. Um.
That's awesome.
It's, it, it was. Uh, um. The projects that we're doing in twenty twenty-four. Are. A big contribution towards, towards, um, drawing that down.
So you think the twenty, the next two years programs need to change then, or is it?
We, we may need to look at changing twenty-five, twenty-six.
Would, okay.
Uh, second year, yeah. Um.
And this was waived, right?
That, 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 that is waived.
Okay, we should just get away about that, so.
Yeah. Um. And, and part of that is going to be, going back to the roads, um. Part of the challenge is going to be if we decide to use roads funds towards, uh, the Alpine Street improvements. Um, for the fire station project.
Well, at this rate, you got a couple of years to worry about that.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
So. What do we do for the roads, we bond, do we know, what is?
No, we're, we're, we, we, we build up a fund, fund balance and we're.
Didn't we add something many, many years ago as that hit?
Oh, oh, uh, I'm in the middle. We bought, we did, we sold up. Uh. Million dollars or nine hundred thousand dollars worth of.
Bonds.
Bonds in. Twenty fourteen or, or fifteen, whichever it was.
Yeah, and, 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 uh. Exactly, and so the, this upcoming fiscal year will be the first year that we don't have, have a repayment on that. Um, but. We, we, there, there, there is a roads millage.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, if there's ten point something that goes toward general operating, the, the general fund. Then there's four point four or four point five that goes towards roads.
I didn't know, I mean, it's been a long time since that's been on the books.
Mm-hmm.
Everything's gotten more expensive, I didn't know.
Yeah.
If anybody thought that maybe we need to allocate more money somehow to our roads to give what we want.
Yeah, and, and, and that, that's part of, of what.
Mm-hmm.
The transportation asset management plan and the upcoming budget.
Right.
Is showing is that we're dumping a lot of money into roads over the next two years.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But. You know. That's. The millage. For the roads, and then the fund balance that we've built up in the roads funds, that was gen- that. You know, we've built up over time because we've done well in, in roads homes.
What's that?
We can't go wrong with my fiction of roads.
But, and, and I mean, you know, we're, we're getting, getting, getting a lot done in the next two years, I mean.
We've gotten a lot done over the years, but I just didn't know. With the increased costs and what we're trying to do, if that was going to be enough, at some point it's not going.
Mm-hmm.
One gets into is repeating the question, because as you're as much as. Doing things very good with the, sorry. You should get some more, yeah, but that's the song.
I mean, there's spots, uh, well, that, I think.
No, I think we've got a great program, the problem with our program, though, is we got some big checks, and there's, that's the cell, that's what the problem is.
Yeah, and one, I mean, that, that, that's, that's what part of it too is, I mean, we, we did, we did, you know, a big project in twenty fourteen with, with, um, with that bond. And over the last, you know, eight, ten years, we've knocked off a lot of the easy stuff.
Right.
And all that's left is the expensive, you know, four, 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 four-inch mill and overlays.
Right. Stormed different things too, storm work, we gotta go on Broad Street.
We should be proud of our road network, though, it's in, it's in, I might say very good condition, but it's in much. Better condition than most.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Maintenance agencies. So, so one, one of the things I. One of the things I didn't see in the memo. That I'd like you to update if you can, I'd like to see, show how our taxable value has increased. From, you know, whatever the back you wanna do to where we're, where we're at, um. Yeah, and I got it, right?
Okay.
But that's, that, that's a positive story.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
The, the, the other thing that, that I didn't, that I forgot to include in my memo was, um. The, that we signed the, the, the new contract with, uh, Teamsters.
Yeah.
This, this last year.
That helps you build a project at least out of yours.
Couple of them.
And then, um. In a long term. As growth continues in the DDA. You know, their contribution towards downtown maintenance and other things, I think, is more likely. That's. No problem, I figured you guys are moving up and down. Now, as the bell goes, you know, that's, that's a project that is outside the DDA. Guess we'll stall a little bit.
Not hard.
There we go, all catch bases clear. I've seen mine. I've seen your guys out. At one point in time, I think you volunteered Justin to, uh. Financial analysis of, uh. I don't know, A, B, or C on small, when, when can we expect to see that?
Yeah, so I, I would expect another couple of weeks, it, it. It's something that, that I haven't had a lot of time to, to spend on.
Okay.
Um, so it's, it's kinda not, not been a high priority, I've just kind of been pushing it in favor of getting other stuff done.
What was the question? I, at, at, at one time. It might have been when we had Mr. Lutton here presenting on the small case study. Justin volunteered to do a financial effect analysis. Of, I forget what version, or maybe it was a couple of different versions, but it, I was, but, and, and so. I, it's probably worth understanding what that would contribute to term total.
But, and, and, and I, I, I did, uh, I did ask OHM to provide me with, um, some estimated annual, like, what, 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 what should we be contributing towards? You know, or what, what should we be expecting to save for, having to contribute towards annual, um, road maintenance, sewer, water. Um, wastewater pipes. Um, the, the, the in, the infrastructure maintenance, you know, annual. What's, what's the word, um, amortized, but like, a, 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 annualized?
Yep. Well, I don't know, you know, I, I moved into Westridge in two thousand one, I think those roads were then in. Nineteen ninety-nine. They're twenty-five years old right now, and, you know, at year seventeen. Well, we probably did crack ceiling a couple of years before that, and then we kept sealing them. For not a lot of money relative to maintain that. And we're now on year twenty-five of those roads. Would, I know we put some money into catch basin or various curves, we'd have to do that, but they'd settle out, everything, you know, that, that happens, but. There's been a lot of life in those roads, and, and the maintenance we just approved is gonna just extend the life of that. I mean, it's, it's a perfect example of how the original assets are being protected for as long as you can get. I saw, I saw a couple of plates around there. Yeah, no, it's okay, I get it. I get it, it's, it's okay, it's okay.
You got good soils out there too. That makes a good thing.
Yeah, that's true. That, that's true.
That's your project does not, it's all.
There, 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 there's good soils on Westridge.
No, but we've done a good job.
Yeah.
That's, you know, this. They're not sitting, they're sitting pretty good right now, obviously, where they're going with this money, and they pointed to that direction, saying, well, this, unfortunately, they're. They're sitting good, so if we do this a little less than what we do somewhere else, they'll, they'll, this, it'll get some more on John, and they can walk, it's better. And if you get those catch bases repaired, that's gonna be huge, because that'll take all the water to go up. I think this next couple of projects, this next couple of years.
Wow, Dan, do you have any other questions, related to general funds, I mean, we can ask more next week if we have one, so.
Um, so, so actually, that was one thing I wanted to, to ask, um, I, I had originally, uh. Looked at May fourteenth, the next one. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna be available.
Okay.
Um, that day, so I'm gonna have to send out another email or try, try, try and pick another day.
I thought Josh was gonna do it.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm gonna move my daughter to Detroit. When next week, that's what day I was gonna, yeah, you're gonna move, right?
I gotta hang out with my dog.
I think I can help my daughter and help her move, I'll call her. So, what do I do on the fifteenth?
Let's take a look.
Does the next day, the fifteenth work?
Uh, fifty, fifty could work.
Same time?
Mm-hmm.
May. Thank you, guys.
Wednesday.
We got at least three.
I mean.
Just move, just move it, move it a day and.
I might come in sweaty from a workout, but it's a Wednesday, so I won't be a.
I'm happy that you're here.
For the record, um, I mowed my lawn right before this, which is good, so nobody can get a ticket, please. Yeah, I mean, I may not have mowed that one strip that you can really see from your house, so please don't, um.
I'm tall anymore.
That one strip between the shed and that wooden pile.
You'll be the anonymous caller.
Yep.
Okay, so we're back down, is it okay to go nonarranged participation? Not seeing anybody online or.
Here, I guess that was not arranged.
Yeah, well, that's good. So, th- thank you everybody for coming tonight and staff for the time put into the budget. Um, it shows that there's been thought, uh, I do wanna, you did mention here, we have an adapted a goals workshop thing.
Mm-hmm.
I, I at some point in time, whether even if it's June. I'd like to.
Adapt the goal.
Adapt something, so if you guys could proofread that and clean it up, and there's some spelling and some typos in there, just clean up. For the final, be great.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I, I grabbed the one that I had used for February and pulled it forward to, to this one, but we, we, we'd have to spend, spend some time with it now that we've had our.
We have a word document as well, that's just like the results card.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's great. Okay, we are, been adjourned, I guess. Florida. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So?